You survived the weekend?
Yeah, I'm dry.
Yep. Keep the electric on and everybody happy?
Yeah, everything went well.
Good.
Only the plane I had was too hot to have a campfire. It was.
I can't remember. It was winter festival. Once I saw its face.
Yeah.
I recognized the face.
Yeah.
I heard it was too green to fish out there ago.
Oh. Was that?
Too much algae to fish.
Yeah, it is. It was pretty mossy.
And our fish are happy.
You got happy fish?
We do have happy fish.
They're smiling?
Yeah. Nobody can catch them. Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it's too bad for you. Too bad you can't come up with a way to clean that up a little bit.
Well, we got a plan. It's gonna take a while.
Time and money. As you know. We'll get there, Jack.
What they did over Lost Island, Lost Island's a lot cleaner now.
Is it?
They used to be really weedy. That's their sorry to ever weeds over there anymore. East over Boje, they've really cleaned that out.
What kind of process do you guys have in mind as far as cleaning it up? Like, is it?
Oh, well, we've been doing it. We're in the very early stages. There's a organization within the Department of Natural Resources called Big Restoration. I have funds to renovate the lakes. We've been working with them and it's a kind of a three-year, five-year project, project to get on their list because that's where the money takes that long. Um, so the, we're looking at various options. The, the overall goal would be to drain it and graduate and start over.
Okay.
And the lake has been sixty-five, so it's lasting longer than natural lake as far as sanitation and all that and stuff. But that's a possibility. There's other options too. That's where I'm looking at possibly doing next three or five years.
Can you get more direct water in it?
Well, that, that's the, a big part of that is trying to improve the watershed. That's what we're working on right now. Improve the tidal feeds in order to panique the water protected before it gets to the lake, that type of thing. But we're at a mercy of rain against
Yeah.
percentile.
There's no spring in the bottom of it?
Not that I'm aware of. We're fourteen years until it lasts right now.
How deep is it?
About nine and a half off the island now.
Well, that's not going to leave.
Well, I said, we're a little bit. Yeah.
Do we ever do anything out there for the algae?
You gotta come earlier.
You had to come a little bit earlier. You'd have got in on the conversation.
It is a plot.
Let's stand and do the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I see no public discussion. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda minutes dated August twenty-ninth, twenty-three? Plath? Stecker? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Who is that?
So if you had questions or needed anything from him, we could contact him.
Okay. Everybody had a chance to look at the claims in your iPad? Any discussion on the claims? Before we have a motion?
About thirty thousand dollars. Um, that was in the paper. Thirty thousand dollars donation payment and I think responding this morning. That was agency management. Yeah, I could give them.
Yes.
That's all.
Yeah. Anything else on claims? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the claims. Wector, second by Plath? Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, motion carried. That woman with two first names. Come on up. Twenty whole years.
I won't. I started when I was ten. You got twenty-one? Uh, no. You're dead, dude.
I'll shake your hand. We'll let you get a picture. Right here, please. Thank you very much for your service.
You're welcome. Thank you. Enjoyed it.
Good.
As long as you're shorter than my age.
Thank you, Jack.
Burns not coming in?
He's not gonna make it. So I'll bring you a certificate.
Want me to take a picture of you?
No, thank you. All right, thanks.
Thanks.
We are up to medical examiners. Everybody had a chance to look in your folder about medically examiner and adding one?
Adding too little.
Yeah.
That was gonna be my question. Look, I got the phones.
Yeah, I would make a motion to affirm the motion on I said?
Second.
Is that Plath? Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We are up to set date and time for bid opening of county farm lease bids and approved publication notice.
Rossard called me. He just wanted to be clear on that, about how we're gonna do it. Anybody that puts a bid in will have a chance to raise it. You're only going to the highest bid. How are we gonna do it?
Last time, if I remember, um, if I read right or here in the notice, after the bits have been opened, the three highest bidders of the sealed bids will be allowed to increase their bids.
True.
So
You let Ross know that?
Yeah, I will, um, call him. He wanted to know when the date was, so I'll call him today and see if he has an email and maybe send it.
See, he just wants to know how we're gonna do it, make sure that, you know, who has a chance to raise the bid.
Yeah.
The only question was, you're still, we're still gonna stand firm on not allowing organic farming. And I told him, I think that's pretty sure that's true. What I'm gonna let organic farming, because I can't compute that.
I I'm in favor of not having organic farming or county farm.
Well, I am too.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm, Stecker, Whacker, what are your opinions?
I guess I don't know enough, but they were getting farming to really make a decision on it. You get a lot of weeds.
Yeah, I mean, when we talked about it before, I, in general, agree with that. But if that's gonna be our stance, do we need to have that in the notice?
That is last time.
Yeah.
Just change the date.
Yeah, but I, we wouldn't have had that as a requirement the last time. And do we have to allow people to raise their bids?
I think if we have before, you know, we would need, need to continue that. Just we don't have.
I don't know.
But the justice.
I guess there's two ways to look at it. You could get people getting in a bidding war, but you could also have people lowball it and just think they're gonna, just gotta raise it as low as possible, so.
Well, she said the three highest, so if they lowball it, they're probably gonna be out anyways.
If there's, if there's others competition.
Yeah.
If there's three people that bid on it, they all can.
I don't, it's worked the last few times. We've done this work good. I've had, and we have had guys raise their bid.
Do you remember, did you remember what we got last time?
She wouldn't have been.
You, I
I can go grab the phone, though.
I may remember what we rented it out for.
Yeah, I just
That I don't remember either.
I can go grab that. I hope quick if you want me to.
Why don't you? We got time.
Okay.
I'd kinda like to know what we got last time. It's like two something. I thought it was three fifty.
No, no, it was definitely not.
I was thinking like two seven.
That's kinda cheap.
I don't think it was over three hundred.
Hmm.
I don't remember what the CSR there is or anything.
It's a decent farm.
Two hundred and seventeen total four acres.
Yeah. Short two forty. You know, and then the buildings are out. Just got terraced building spot. Hasn't Rossor got it the last two times? I think. So is
Oh, yeah. I guess I jumped right over it. Yeah, it does already. It does have in the notice as conditions to not organically farm. I skipped.
Two eighty-six.
I was saying it was like two seventy-something.
Eighty-six an acre.
Yeah.
Well, they did real well.
They did one, they were real well, and that was seven dollar corn and seven dollar beans.
And that was a three-year lease too, right?
Yeah, sure.
Well, everybody wanna do it on a three-year lease again?
That'd be fair.
So then they can fertilize it accordingly.
When do you want to do it? When do you want it?
I have in there to, um, add the bids into the auditor by Monday, October second, four P M, and to open the bins at eight thirty-five A M, Tuesday, October third.
On October third.
Yes.
I'd move that to those days.
Does that include the, the publication notice on the paper?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you gonna put it in the old one paper and the reminder? So we're
Um, we usually just do that on a paper and two other papers.
Bankrupt and Yeah, I don't think it's ever gone in the reminder.
We are keeping the bidding part and that they're able to raise their bid.
I think your motion was done.
Yeah, yeah, I'll second. Does it cross a lot more to put it in the reminder? I'm just curious.
I don't know.
It, it wouldn't be one of our official newspapers. That's why it wouldn't go there.
Yeah, I know, but more people get to reminder than get yelled on a paper. My everybody gets reminder.
Yeah.
Just an idea.
Well, that's, maybe we need to discuss having it as an official. So can we use that?
Well, we
This Add a lot
Only have to have
A lot of publication costs.
Still, this is something different than official publication. This is because when we sell trucks or anything, we put that in a reminder. We don't put that in the old one paper.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because of the suit kind of publication.
Yeah. It's up to you, Tammy. I don't care.
It's up to you guys. If, if you wanna have that as part of your motion, otherwise I'll just leave it the same.
It could be beneficial to reach more people. Maybe we get more bids that way.
I, I think probably most people that are interested in this would already know it's coming up, but I I'm not opposed to it either way.
We could add it to her website.
I don't want many people looking at that either.
There's probably a decent amount of people that are on there. I, I
We'll leave the motion as it stands. Everybody in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't cost any.
We are up to discussion decision on the homestead military disallowances for twenty twenty-three. Any discussion?
No, standard.
Do I have a motion to approve?
No moves.
Why? So, Stecker? Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous. Oh. Manayakah Housing Trust Fund, um.
Okay, so they had, uh, called us and asked or sent a letter asking for their amount to count, which it was, and then um, then they found out that you guys had only approved fifteen hundred instead of three thousand. They were concerned about that amount. So they have written a letter, which is in your pockets, explaining why, um, they would like you to reconsider the fifteen hundred to three thousand. Um, if you prove it, you add it to a budget.
It's, does a lot of good. It helps the poor people upgrade their houses. That three thousand is multiplied many times over by government grants.
We're gonna add it to the budget then.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
I feel like there is a reason we made that reduction in the budget time, trying to think.
All, one of them, one of the things is that co-ops, electric co-ops used to manage it and run it and they had money to it and they quit. That was one of the reasons, but and they thought it was going to fold, but it hasn't pulled. And I have been keeping up with it, so.
So what did the state change? Because in this letter, they talked about state funding.
State hasn't changed much on funding.
Provide critical match for state funding. We're kind of making requests.
It's harder to get, but
Well, we believe that raising county support from fifteen hundred to three thousand significantly bolster our capacity to tackle crucial projects and change. The only thing I could see that is for the state.
I remember I part of that one last homework is who we used to give the money to. Um, and we learned, and you guys weren't sure that, that NaiKo was gonna be ready to take on this responsibility. How much they were gonna be doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's home there. It is.
I guess I, I don't know. I'd like to have a little more details here, 'cause I don't know.
Well, we'll do a roll follow.
Uh, Plath?
Yes.
Wector?
Yes.
Stecker?
Abstain.
Jacks?
Yes, motion carried. Okay. We'll put it on with our budget amendment. Proved date and time for the FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget amendment hearing.
So I did put a folder, um, and uh, board folders, um, called working budget amendment. That kinda gives you an idea of where we're at right um, for the budget amendment. I did get an email from Doug Miller that he's gonna have to add seconds on the road to that too. I haven't talked to him yet. Um, the, the areas that are highlighted in yellow are the amounts or the item numbers that are still working. I just need to talk to Phil about the amounts that he wants for Sweet City rent, um, the revenue for EMS for racism, C P R classes. Have to talk to Todd about what he thinks we're gonna bring in for national opioid settlements. And, um, the sheriff's office to get a local grant for fifteen hundred dollars from my vision. And so I need to find out from them if they're gonna use a regular line item to pay for that or if they want it. Maybe we'll have a new method. But I'm still working with Department of Health, but that's where we're sitting right now.
So what date did you have in mind?
So we're looking at October third.
That's a full month away.
Yeah, but we have to publish it for between ten and twenty days prior.
Do you have to publish the amounts or just
This notice, this, um, resolution.
The amounts are in there as well.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that's real. Yes, I believe so.
Um, is is Doug gonna be able to give you this together by then?
When do you have to actually send it to the papers?
Um, I think it's gonna be published in twenty-one, so it'll be to the paper nine fifty. So by next Friday.
Okay.
So that gives us some time. We're gonna, and then, um, I have to go into the state system and feed them on my conference screen before I can write it in the machine.
You wanna call this? Long as you're
Yeah.
The key's up, thank you. Yeah.
We had a motion yet to set that?
No.
Plus you think it needs to be done sooner.
You know, I don't think we can
You can come up to the boardroom whenever.
Set the public hearing.
Uh.
Big time.
Yep, bye.
October third?
Eight thirty.
Good.
October third at eight thirty-five, we're doing them.
Yeah, the, the budget.
It won't take that long.
Do we need more time if we don't have all these like roads and other things? If we don't actually have them ready yet, do we need more time? Okay, do we have to have this done by a certain time for certain projects or?
No, we just, we need to do it this year before the end of the year. We're gonna not be able to get to the guest card.
Well, that, that each back, we have to have them.
Yeah.
Asking for payment. But we're in a page back. Because it wasn't finished and last was three years' budget. So that, that we have to get done quickly.
Okay. That's what I was curious if there's timeline for it.
We will do one more budget amendment in four years, all day.
And the other thing I wanted to mention about the budget in there is a line for payment for sheriff. Um, he, I talked to him earlier about this, a couple of weeks about this, but he, he thought that the came down was a budgeted line. I never did realize it was down by donations. Um, so he is asking now for the K nine to be part of the regular budget, so being funded by donations. He had said that if you want him to come in and talk to you about that prior to the amendment, him and Jeffery Mark, I remember they would be happy to do that. We just need to let him know that.
Yeah. So they want to fund it through the county instead of donation.
That's not gonna stop them from being able to take donations for it, correct?
Correct. They're gonna be able to take those.
Come on in.
What do you think? Have you done every one yet?
Yes.
What was that? I didn't even see it. It's on there.
It was in December.
Just a little.
Yeah, I do a little.
I figured that's what it was, but I hadn't seen anything.
Yeah, it's added you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So we have a second to the motion yet?
No.
So we made a motion and I didn't
Plath did. For October third?
Eight thirty.
I'll second the motion. Discussion on the motion, when to set the time and date for the public hearing on the budget amendment? Any questions or any comments?
Well, somebody had a question. What, Doug was gonna be ready by that time? Budget amendment, October third?
Um, we should be, yeah, I was just doing with Tammy last week and this is a little bit more this week. And when do you need it? Need to find figures.
Well, we have to have it till April by fifteenth, which means I have to put it in the system for the Department of Management. So next week, so any
Ten days, we, I mean, we have time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of proving the time and date for the budget amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous. I think we are up to road construction.
Oh, we have no request for construction road railway.
Then we will go to discussion with our county engineer and zoning administrator. Then we will go to discussion with our county engineer and zoning administrator.
Uh, construction. Uh, we're waiting to hear when they are going to be doing shouldering. We have all the approaches, driveways that were completed, uh, they just need to come in and do their shouldering. We're hoping sometime this week and then follow up with traffic marking. On the bridge project, uh, south of Tyke, they should be pouring concrete, uh, for their north pier, north apartment, so if they could form that up in two weeks, we should be getting a pour in two to three weeks, I would assume, and get things, uh, cured and ready for traffic.
They might make it before harvest.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Let's see, yeah. Not gonna make any guarantees. Uh, the herb to bridge, they're doing some work today, they had put in some passes on that and they were not, they didn't get enough asphalt in it, so they will be getting that completed. And the Seneca Gun Club, that is all completed now. Uh, D sixty-nine oh one, we talked a little bit about folding up there, and Isman's phone company did get that, uh, uh, back and connected. And, yeah, going to airport, uh, they did push that construction back, uh, to September eighteenth. And the pavement is placed at the bridge, the state bridge south of, um, Benton. So that should be opened up shortly, I would think. Get strength and then get that shoulder on there and everything should be done. Um, looking to start interviewing for some positions. Uh, this week, our operators are working ten hour days, next week they return to five, eight hour days for their work week. I received a call from Eric Wilson, Low Heritage Life. What? He wants to visit with secondary road employees.
So Donna
I mean, he wants to, he wants to individually speak with them during working hours, and I'm not gonna allow that.
Donna did send him an email after she had heard that he was in the courthouse talking to employees. She did send him an email reminding him that the board approved for him to talk during opening enrollment. And that we would leave, um, information would be accessible to employees if they wanted to contact him on his own time. So he did say that he understood that, so hopefully he won't be contacting him anymore till
Alright. Thank you.
Yeah.
And then, uh, transfer station manager. At this time, I have one application for that. I plan to get that interview taken and get a person hired. Is the board going to appoint the person I recommend?
You only had one application?
That's correct.
If the process was taken care of?
You will. I mean, the process is, I, I advertised in three papers. Spent ten days, it's been on the bulletin boards for ten days. Is that the process?
That's our policy.
Because this is the first time, in fact, I think that you seconded it last November, you seconded the, uh, appointment of the manager, so.
I wasn't aware that time that we didn't follow our own policy.
Okay.
We should have.
Well. Take care of that. Other than that, I don't have anything.
On one ninety, whatever happened with the, out there with Brian Foreman?
Uh, I'm gonna be talking with our road foreman, just allow me with him about that, so we can take care of the road. But the road is only, I think it's forty feet of road right away.
Yeah.
I don't know what's going on north of that.
It's only eight thirty.
Took my one, my blood pressure feels like it's sick some. So they're working.
Almost positive.
It's quiet?
Well, compared to last week, this is, this is paradise.
Okay, quiet.
We probably would have had thirty some people here last week.
Uh, the chairs were full.
Yeah, that's what I was just counting, I didn't, didn't count.
Yeah, we had thirty some.
Little thirties, but yeah.
Little drainage request, Marge? The, the engineer Jacobson Westgar, didn't he retire? I'll think of his name when I don't need to.
So then
Rick Copper, yeah, Rick.
Then Colin.
Colin Clintonby, cause the engineer, I did Rick retire, though. Okay, I thought so, but I wasn't, I'm not so sure.
I heard that he found it out. Colin is now their head engineer. They're getting Eastman signed up for Morris.
Well, I haven't heard any updates.
Yeah. Got three more this week.
What are the, the percentage wise?
Not very many. Oh, small ones, north. Navigated, not summer.
Yeah, yeah, they were, I mean, they were almost a quarter before.
Yeah, so they added three more.
Well, depending on which three, that's
I don't know, I didn't ask which three that had happened. It's not as contentious. We are up to appoint Jacobson, investigative engineer for PK one open ditch repairs.
I, I'd make motion to appoint him. Appoint Jacobson Westguard. Whacker.
Or whacker, I mean, yeah. I'll get a W out of an N. Any, uh, discussion on it? Hearing none. Do a roll call vote.
Class?
Yes.
Wactor?
Yes.
Second?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried unanimous. Anything else, Marge? Wanna send up my letters? Or phone call, or whatever you're gonna do? To have him get started? I don't know how much
Oh, just, yeah, yeah, just a phone call.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yes. Probably be nicer they'd share the report that they did on it originally.
Bold, thanks.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they will. Yeah.
Yeah.
I talked to Tyler about it before, he said they would share their information, so that's not gonna be a problem.
Their own footage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, they'll, they'll work work on that efficiently, so they don't have to redo stuff.
Anything else from Marge? If not, we're up to our time with the county auditor.
Um, for next week, we have secondary road forming, kids with regional health center, monthly report. On the next, all of them are going for next week, so.
Just keep it that way.
This could be the new record for the shortest name that I've ever, I basically, like, heard.
Well, it's not the shortest one, it's fast.
Three minute one.
Yeah, yeah, I picked it back, that was a special one to that.
I don't, I don't think it will be that.
No, I didn't think so either, yeah.
So, we didn't have the handbook on this week's agenda because, um, we haven't had a chance to get hold of the areas of community. Then, once we get a hold of that and find out from them, but I did find, um, some sample, um, in books that they've done for other counties. The information that we're questioning Kevin, and that the other law firm said we shouldn't, is in the other handbooks. So I don't know if, we might not have an issue. Yeah, so, um, once we talk to them, then we'll put the handbook back. Jada, but we'll set up a time to do that. That is I'm gonna be gone Thursday and Friday, Melissa and I both can become speed three certified. Um, and that's election training, and only auditors and election deputies can be speed three certified, which is the highest level of election training. So we will be gone Thursday and Friday.
That's good. That's this week?
Yes.
Jack, did you have anything last week?
No.
Nope, nothing. Starker?
I didn't have any board meetings, but there, there is a public comment thing down in Des Moines tomorrow for even know, best way to describe it, but one of the things that encompasses workforce development boards, um, but it's I think it's kinda in line with the governor's reorganization bill, there's like more they're trying to do. And I'm still, um, I'm gonna try and wrap my head around that a little more yet today, but I do know some other supervisors that are going down to that to comment at it, so I'll have to see what I can figure out with that, but that's tomorrow. At least that's all I got.
I didn't have any committees last week. Next week, we have Naiakog. About it.
Well, I was supposed to have a third judicial district, um, meeting Friday, but we decided to cancel it because of the new advisory style with the board is, and, and, um, there's just not a whole lot of updated information for now, so decided to cancel that one.
Anything else to come before the good of Kusuth County? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.